This is the native vegetation area. I'm gonna turn around. There's Love to the top. This is a pull-through parking on the highway. This is the current location Aquatic Center. This is where the new skate park would go on top of our current one. A dog park, a playground, and bathrooms adjacent to the pull-through parking. You have a one-mile-lit walking path around the park as well as a trailhead that goes up through the school property to Bobcat Drive. You'll notice these baseball and softball fields. The school district owns this property, but they don't have the money to develop it for themselves, but they want to partner with us if we develop it to have a facility open to the public. Everyone knows that they, I got, we got literally kids fighting for a patch of grass that stepped to a park to have their practices as we're growing. It's the busiest time of the year. You go down to the softball fields and the baseball fields and they're packed. We know there's conflict all the time with trying to reserve those areas. These two parks would be utilized by both and reserved by the high school and the community. They have a paved path going up to Ward Mountain Trails as well as a horse trail coming off of the Shushon property. The reason why it's on letterhead for the district attorney is, look, I can try to throw criminals in prison all day long, but it's not going to change our community or make it safer. I've said this when we, when I partnered with the development of the Boys and Girls Club. You invest in the children of our community, give them a safe place to be and get them away from their damn video games, and you might actually see a difference in a healthy community going forward. We create healthy parents, strong community members that want to stay here and not move away when they turn eighteen.
So is this combined with the Broadbent and the skate park, and it's combined into the one?
Yes, sir.
And the priori, and the ranking on this particular project, at least it was the skate park, I can't remember what, it was five?
It was four last time.
Four.
Yes, and so what we're asking to do is bundle this project with the new downtown project that's different now.
Well, and the reason we're asking for that is because of the expanded scope that Elizabeth had got direction from the BLM on, is that if we combine these parks, we're getting into the range of what they're looking, they want to fund. Rather than doing small projects, which could leave million-and-a-half-dollar projects, if we combine this, we're getting more the size of projects that they're looking to award.
How much money you looking at?
Well, and that's the nice thing about this type of a project, is it is infinitely scalable. Right now, for these combined projects and amenities worth looking at, anywhere from about nine to twelve million dollars, but we could dial that back down to probably even as low as six, depending on what they're willing to award. In, you know, Las Vegas, they're awarding eighteen, twenty-million-dollar projects, so I don't feel like this is outside of the ask.
Right. Go ahead.
Your question, um, so is this is bundled together as one?
This is one project we're planning on doing.
Okay, so is it phased? I mean, because you said that this, and I wasn't here, I don't think I've been appointed with this first one, so fair to me. So, but the skate park was number four. So now, if we say this is rated number one, so are things phased then?
It doesn't, it doesn't, now the symptom says we can do acquisition development in one grant instead of doing the step-by-step-by-step. We would break ground.
They want a whole complete project.
And do a boat at the same time.
And this is, and it is, because in our discussions with Elizabeth, and correct me if I go off-base here, but what they're looking for is a project that can be phased in case like, okay, the entire project is twenty million dollars, but we can phase it down if they only want to award twelve or they want to award nine, we can phase it and make the project fit. And that's what's really genius about this project, is that in the planning phases, we can make that work.
Does it go further? How much money does Snipoma have, or estimate? What they had to get a large amount of?
They said they had over three hundred and some million for this upcoming round.
So our ask at twenty or thirty or whatever, is dropping the budget.
And, and to my, and to, I think what would be smart to do as far as sustainability going forward and making our budget still work, is have some public-private partnerships, reach out to Loves, reach out to McDonald's. They're gonna realize a bunch of, a lot more revenue from being able to stop folks here. I don't think it'd be out of the ask to have one of their employees, you know, go clean up the trash or, you know, whatever that looks like. I mean, I don't see where they would be, you know, opposed to helping us out here, because it's gonna be a huge benefit for their business.
Well, and if I may too, there's also, because it satisfies so many different things, there's, there's transportation alternatives, grants through Department of Transportation, there's RAC grants, there's all kinds of other stuff, there's tourism money, um, you know, it, the project as a whole has so many merits and is so diverse too, that there is quite a bit of other revenue streams, but none as big and potentially a one-shot-in-the-arm kind of thing as Snipoma does.
So initially, the first-place priority in the last round was gonna be property acquisition for the Downtown Plaza. Over the last couple of years, as we've looked at that project and we've learned new things and we've had other people come in, and with this great opportunity that Snipoma's offering us, we've decided, the Main Street group, I need to be quick with my personal presenting, the Main Street group has decided that moving the Downtown Plaza to Broadbent Park where there's more space, where that park has needed renovations, where it's still within the Downtown and close to Main Street and doing some property acquisition there, and joining this with the DA's project and the clerk's project, we can make a whole project that really fits Snipoma's ask a lot better than just one of our projects individually or just the property acquisition that was proposed before.
And to bring this to light, because that was number one last time. Making it perfectly clear to everybody, now you've taken that project out. And you're, you're sure to do that? Is that gonna be part of this?
We've changed that project. We haven't taken it out. We're still doing a Downtown Plaza. It's just not happening where we thought it would be.
They're moving into Broadbent.
We're moving to Rock Block Six.
That's what I'm asking. So you're, you're not asking us to keep the priority one Downtown, you're, you're moving your priority to Broadbent, am I right?
Just being bundled.
Which is Downtown.
But, well, I understand that. But I, what I don't want to do is have two projects on one.
No, 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 no. There's no pro, two projects. We've taken that and we've morphed it into a different.
It's an umbrella.
That's fine, that's.
Because that was just property acquisition, and that's exactly what the BLM told Elizabeth. We don't want to do just acquisition anymore. We want to do a completed project. We want it phased so we can, you know, do some other things. And so all those amenities that we were talking about in the Plaza downtown, Splashpad, Amphitheater, things like that, would be moved to Broadbent. You've got the conceptuals that are sitting right there, partnering it with Trailhead for OHV and bicycle and hiking and things like that. I need to impress plenty that these are ideas, these are not, you know, finished construction drawings. We have a lot of time to kind of flush this idea out, and I applaud Elizabeth for bringing this to light as soon as she did, so that we have the time to kind of flush these ideas out and get the absolute best presentation of something that we can.
Okay, I think we're.
Sure. All right, well, I'm usually not the, the short-winded one, but I am gonna wrap all this together, if you don't mind. So anyway, again, this is, this is a comprehensive plan, this is a long-term vision that really touches more onto city planning, community development, things like that. So, really, the big thing that I want you guys to see, you can go through and you can see the merits of the projects, both individually from the parks, and the merits of combining them together. Physical and mental wellness, we're beautifying not just one, but two of our entry corridors into the city. Both of those corridors are underutilized and blighted. Neither one of these projects stands alone more important than the sum of its parts. And truly, if you take these in their own individual parts and in consideration with some of the other projects that are proposed, combining these allows for an open spot that maybe another project that might not be able to get prioritized, that it allows them to go ahead in there. Both park designs are complementary and they're amenities, and they satisfy major needs in the community. They capture visitors that currently drive through and allow for cross-promotion and sharing of information about our assets. It adds quality-of-life amenities that encourage a healthy and engaged community, and it uses established routes, OHV routes, mountain bike routes, to go ahead and connect those parks. So when you click to this third page right here and you look, this is, this is the vision of the triangulation that we're talking about right here. If you take what Mark's doing with the train and you take what tourism is doing with trail expansion, trailhead expansion in Garnet Hill, the Trails to Trains ticket, all of this stuff, what you see here is this triangulation between Broadbent Park, the park it loves, and the railroad that really encompasses all of our opportunities for growth and expansion. You look at where the open land is, you look at where the industrial development is going, you look at where the residential properties are, and this absolutely surrounds our community with three recreation hubs and accessibility points with amenities for parking, bathroom, lighting, all of that stuff. So truly, this is a legacy plan that fifty years from now, somebody's gonna be like, man, they were thinking, you know? So please consider it.
Thanks.
Who else do we have for Snipoma? Anybody? I think they're home. Is that what's going on?
Yes.
Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Katherine Brunson. I am the chairman of the Ag District thirteen and Fairgrounds Advisory Board. Bill Panagopoulos is the co-chairman. We have Martin Crowe and Cody Coombs also here. Cody's not on the board, but he's been a huge asset to getting this ready and just an inside thought process on how Snipoma is going to work and what this round's gonna look like and what we should be asking for. So when we created our plan, we thought not only about how to enhance our facility, but how to also counteract the additional costs that are gonna come with it. So, and you'll see that throughout. So I'm gonna hustle through it, 'cause I know you want to go get through them pretty quick. So we divided phases in this. Phase one, we have grandstands upgrade, a concession remodel, and a construction of pay-to-use showers. Phase two is replacement of the inside track railing, vaulted bathroom addition inside the infield, which is inside the racetrack, north arena lighting, which does not exist yet, and an upgrade to the south arena lighting and RV hookups along the inside track railing. Phase three includes an event center, a multi-use facility, and upgrading the power supply because right now we are maxed. So we, that is one of our main goals. Phase four is replacing the overnight barns, construction of corrals and construction of starting gates, of a starting gate storage building. And phase five is to finish the park area, which was our Snipoma project from a few years ago, and construction of a walking trail, which was in our vision for that, and we would like it to, to get done. Okay, so I'm gonna skip through this and read this as I show you guys the images so you can see where we're talking. So the grandstands upgrade, and I'm gonna try not to shake, but this is the grandstands here. This is where you drive in and then the track right here. We want to do an upgrade on the materials used for the grandstands because every two to three years, we're spending a large amount of money to maintain that. We think that, we feel that upgrading the materials used would be fiscally beneficial, which is one of the areas where, when you look at phase three, and we're adding this giant event center that's going to, yes, bring people in, but it's also gonna cost having a full-time host at the fairgrounds to maintain, things like that. This is one of the areas where we're going to actually save money every year, and so we're looking at that as a little counteractive. Concessions, construction slash remodel, undergoing a remodel in the concession stands will enhance the experience of those working it and will alleviate some continuous challenges faced each year. And the concessions is right here, but if you've ever worked in it, and I've seen some faces here that have worked in it, the storage in the fridge area is not conducive to having big events and multiple entities using it at the same time. It's a continuous battle. We want it to work for everybody, and so that's one of our main things. The construction of pay-to-use showers, it's an amenity that other facilities offer and it's in really high demand. And we're, this is our new bathroom facility we've in, we've constructed. We want to add them onto that, so the water's already there, we're just constructing.
So to, to add on to that, that's a facility that we're looking at. If you go to, say, Winamaka or Elko, for example, a lot of those events that happen that we, we house here at our, our facility, you know, there are people that stay over that have living course horse trues, those kinds of things. This would provide those facilities for those people to, to be able to use that. Not at a free cost, there's a cost, and the, the cost of that is to offset what it costs to have the facility there. So, and the hopes is that this will be a, a neutral improvement to, to the fairgrounds.
And the estimated cost of phase one, and this is prior to an estimate from an engineer, which Ag District thirteen has implemented into our budget for this year if it is selected. We do wish to get an actual estimate, estimate from an engineer so we don't run into inflation, unforeseen costs, all of that. We've also budgeted that out, and which you'll see at the end, but we are expecting one million dollars for phase one. Phase two, the inside track railing replacement, and you can see the track, it's just the inside lining of that. It has far exceeded its useful life, and we love our jockeys, we love our horses, we love it to be accident-free every year. So it's one of our top priorities. We want to maintain this facility, we want it to always be successful, and we feel like that's one of our main things to focus on. As the horse races is one of our largest economic benefits to the community, we feel like that's something we need to address. The vaulted bathrooms inside the infield, we are anticipating locating them right here. We are reconstructing our alleyway and corrals, so that's gonna kind of dictate where everything ends up. But having the vaulted bathrooms inside of there is going to be a huge benefit because when there's events going on, you can't leave. And so that means there's a lot of people sitting in there not being able to leave the bathroom from eight AM to four PM. So we're trying to alleviate that so that when they're working the facility, it's not painful. The north arena lighting, there's no lighting in this arena. We plan to install a pay-to-use LED system. The north arena is this one right here, and then the south arena's right here. We also want to upgrade the south arena lighting to LED. We've been in contact with J and W Electric, and they said it'll only take about three years to make back the money we spend to get it upgraded, because that's how efficient the LED lighting is. So from there on, after the three years, that's another cost-benefit that we see. Okay, so yes, we have this big facility now, but we're not spending the money here, we're spending it here. And then the RV hookups, we added this because we think it would be very beneficial, we would like to add them, and sorry, I'm shaking, but right here along this inside track. When we have events, kids are not hauling their horse trailers away from their horses, they're staying at the facility, their tack is inside, they're set up for the weekend, they're not moving. If they can hook up, we see it as a benefit to the community, instead of just a, hey, we don't have the possibility, sorry, 'cause they're not gonna go hook up anywhere else, they're at the fairgrounds for that event and they're staying all weekend. And you can see that throughout the event, they don't leave. Do you have something down to that?
I was just gonna emphasize, you know, this is one of the time, we, in, in years past when we've talked about this, that the commission has had concern with being in conflict with some of the RV places around town, and, and what we want to emphasize is, again, these people come with their living course horse trailer or whatever, to whatever happens to be happening, we'll say, high school rodeo, for example, that, they get there and they're not moving to go to an RV hookup and then coming back and then going back. That's, they're, they're set, they're there. And so we really feel like, I mean, as it is now, they're, they're, they don't leave, they're there. So we feel like what, all we're doing is enhancing the experience for those folks that come in by providing electrical hookups or those kinds of things for them to be able to have a better experience with us and, and no competition with, with RV facilities in town.
We have to make phase two cost about one point four million dollars. Again, we're still waiting on an estimate, and we plan to move forward with that when we see what the board decides today. Phase three is the event center and upgrade to the power supply. I'll start off with power supply. Right now, we're already maxed. We are at the point where we have to get new wire, we have to get new everything. We are, last year, we upgraded to, because our fair is growing and Beta Signify has done a great job of bringing in vendors, we're, we're, we're always.
So, so if I can jump in, can I borrow here?
Yes.
So, the upper end of the fairgrounds, right here, we, last year, we upgraded to as far as we can go. We can't add another outlet. It, it's, that's it. So in order to get enough or more power up here, we have to add poles, transformers, new wire, the whole nine yards, just to be able to grow our, our fairgrounds, which is part of our mission. And then, uh, what our grand plan with that is, is when, when and if we, we upgrade this, that we'll have enough power to facilitate our, our event center, which we anticipate putting here.
Would all those upgrades be cross-county planned still?
Yes.
Yes. That, and if you, in phase two, are planning to upgrade, you don't have any in the north arena, and then upgrading the south arena, would you be able to do those upgrades without?
We have power brought down.
Yes, 'cause that, that power, we've already, we did that upgrade, forgive me, it's been five years ago.
Okay.
So, so it, it's all there. All we have to do is.
Just for the, the space three, it was.
Yeah, there's just no, there's not enough power on the upper end of our facility.
This is the upper end of the.
On the west side.
And with the new lighting, your power consumption's going to drop considerably.
Yes, and, oh, and with those, there are also a pay-to-use lighting system. I don't know if I mentioned that, but, kind of like the archery barn in McGill, you pay to use the lights. People want to use the lighting. There's events all the time, especially at night. They don't because they have to get in coordination with everybody. If they can just pay to use them, they're gonna use them. So then the event center, this would be a year-round multi-use facility with the potential for new opportunities for Wypen County. For example, the facility would be able to host concerts, sporting events, community activities, and much more. We have seen the benefit to other communities having these event centers, and we feel like it would be a great thing for us. And like I said, we are trying to counter the cost. We know it's gonna cost more to maintain the facility by doing other things to our facility, so that's something we are looking at pretty diligently.
And so we, we, in your packet, I believe you got letters of, of support in, in favor of this. In years past, we've had letters, more, more letters than we have, we were kind of short time getting these letters, but, you know, we, you could see stuff from BMX, we've had letters from them in the past, we've had letters from the Tricycle enrollment, we've had letters from the high school, in addition to the letters you already have. And, and what we really want to emphasize with that facility is, this is not another arena for people, for horse people to go riding. This is a facility that is for the community, that we could have wrestling events in, that we can have concerts in, as mentioned. This is for everything and anything that, that could come in and be part and utilize that facility.
And we see the impact that our few events have on the, on the community, and we want to have more events. We want to be able to do that year-round and not just three, four times a year, we want to do it all of the time, and we feel like that would be the first step. We estimate phase three being at seven point five million. And then we move on to phase four. Phase four is the replacement of the overnight barns. You can see here, we've already done four of them. We have these three to replace. Construction of corrals, overflow is an annual struggle, and our goal is to construct corrals on the east side of the stall, which is right here. And then construction of the starting gate storage building. The starting gate is a crucial piece of putting on the horse races every year. We need to maintain it and keep it in good standing. We anticipate building something right here, just so it's at the facility, and like I said, it's covered, it's maintained, it's not seeing any. Okay, and we anticipate phase four being at five hundred thousand. Phase five, the park area, oh, sorry, we're calling it the park area phase two. We, and you can't see it here because it's not done yet when this image was taken, but we had a Snipoma project, we anticipated a certain amount, we got the engineer estimate after, and we would like to have that be the full vision that we had when we originally sent the Snipoma project in, which is why we have firsthand knowledge of including an inflation unforeseen cost budget to our Snipoma project. And then the construction of the walking trail would go around the entire facility, which is all the way around here, and we think that's a great asset. People can come in with their animals, it's a safe location, and kids love to see cows, they love to see horses, bring them in, it's something different, it's not the same visual you see everywhere else you go walk, it's something a little bit different, and it kind of encourages them to come down, not just during fairtime. We anticipate that costing eight hundred thousand.
And part of that walking trail would include benches for people to take a break if they need to, there could be exercise, uh, facilities, not facilities, exercise structures along the trail, places if somebody wanted to do pull-ups or things like that, that we've seen on other, other walking trails, but just a, a, a trail where people can come down to the fairgrounds and walk and, and get some exercise and enjoy the, the outdoors.
So to close, our phase one, one million, phase two, one point four, phase three, seven point five, phase four, five hundred thousand, and phase five, eight hundred thousand. And we included inflation and unforeseen costs at three million, three point eight million. That was instructed, I believe that was thirty percent?
Thirty percent.
And that's what we were instructed to do, so we did. So our total project cost is sitting at fourteen million, which is well within what they said ask, we have it ask, and we want to increase the flow into our facility. We think it's a wonderful place, and it brings a lot of people to our community every year. So, and then the ten thousand that we budgeted is out of our own budget this year to get the estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So is there any other Snipoma project we have? We have the, the three here, and I'll just briefly go by whatever, and I doubt if you guys have a difference of opinion. If we do the fairgrounds, it's fourteen million, the railroad is between twelve and sixteen million, the parks are twenty million. So, as we categorize these, as we round table and decide.
That was nine to twelve million, Richard, for the parks.
Yeah, not.
Somewhere in the.
Where'd I get the twenty million?
I take twenty.
We thank friends for the extra.
All right, all right, that's why I asked if somebody has a difference of opinion. I've seen so many millions rolling through my head in the last, could be a lot more. But, we, every single one of you have presented your, your projects very well, and they're all needed and they're all would be great. Our job, as difficult as it's going to be today, is to prioritize them, to put them in one, two, and three. We know Snipoma has exorbitant money. Elizabeth's just saying it's been put on hold for a little while, but this commission here, the five of us, and no matter which one we pick, it's gonna make someone else mad, but all of them could someday come to fruition, but we have to, we have to set a, a priority on, like, one, two, three. I think unless somebody has a difference of opinion, this is what we're here for.
Elizabeth, what is the range, again, as far as like, what they want to see, like the twenty million?
They were not specific when we talked to them. They just said large multimillion, which really leaves it open-ended, and I emailed and I said, Bob, can you give me a more reasonable, other than large and multimillion? And I really didn't get a specific answer back. So I like the way these projects are being proposed, that they are multimillion-dollar projects, but they can be phased in the event Snipoma wants us to do it in that manner.
So I may also, if it's Snipoma training this year, they did specify, it wouldn't be unheard of to ask for fifteen million. And, and so, so that's where we based, we said, well, hey, let's take a, a lot of these things that we normally would do in separate proposals and, and put it together.
Right, we understand the phasing part. Bill?
Unless something changes that I'm not aware of, Elizabeth, I don't know that you even have to rank them. I think you just have to select the projects, because when it goes from here to the PTNA, they're gonna select the projects. I don't, I don't recall when I did the presentations last time, they went, went with any considerations of what's, what the board, that PTNA wanted to do. I don't really recall them.
I think we have ranked them in the past, 'cause there have been more than three.
Yeah.
But you can only submit three?
Yes.
Correct. But that's why I thought that what they did, of course, it's been dated since I was on that board, in the past, they've sometimes even had even asked accounting, especially if they're close, which ones you would, you know, which one you would prefer. So I think it should probably be appropriate to maybe go ahead, as unpleasant as it might be.
Carolyn?
Are you going to be accepting public comment? We have.
Not right now. We've done public comment.
It's public here.
It's a public here.
It's a public here, so. Well, so, I know there was, and if I may just ask one more question, Mr. Chairman, there was backup specific to the skateboard park, and I know that was Nicole's previous project. Did you want to present on that project as an individual project, or are you good with it being incorporated into the larger vision of the city coming?
No, I think it's more appropriate to be included under the larger project for both parks.
Go ahead, Carolyn. Please be brief, or brief as you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Caroline McIntosh, and really appreciate Elizabeth letting us know that the scope has changed and not be these small acquisitions followed by the next round of actual creating. So we rethought our project as far as the public plaza and the trails, and that's why it's a larger project. It makes a lot more sense to incorporate the skate park and incorporates everything, including Broadbent, which is totally underutilized right now. So I encourage you that that is a wonderful quality of life for our community, plus for our, for the folks that come through. About fourteen thousand cars a day, and we want to make sure that they understand, we're here for business. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Caroline.
That being said, I think I'll, we'll be able to.
I've got more.
I think we get more public comment.
It's public comment.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Chairman and commissioners, my name is Brad Simpson, I sit on the Main Street Committee. I just want to emphasize that these projects are an impetus, the beginning of growth for the community and it's gonna have a tremendous impact on how the community grows. We have, I hate to bring this up every meeting, a shortage of homes in this community. I'm working with people that are interested in these projects as developers to come in and help. I have people come in weekly, looking for places to live they can't find, there's no grounds. This stuff brings the community together, it allows for growth, it allows for businesses to come in and support the community. I think this is probably one of the best projects this community has seen that will impact the rest of the county economically for the future.
Thank you. So more public comment.
Elizabeth, we'll do.
I got you, I'm just trying to expedite the meeting.
Yeah, Elizabeth, we'll do with White Pine Main Street and the four points of White Pine Main Street are organization, promotion, design, economic vitality. I believe those, the park project really encompasses all of that for the community and and the visitors.
Thank you.
Excellent. Is there any more? Come on.
I'm Martin Trout, I can't add much to what Kathy and Bill said, I think they did a wonderful job. I would like to point out, on the fairgrounds facility, right now, myself and several other people in this community, horse-related, we travel a long ways to attend big events, equestrian events. And in our travels in different areas of Nevada, Utah, Idaho, we always are asked, why doesn't White Pine County have an event center like most other counties in Nevada, that they would travel here in the wintertime to attend big events if we had the big facility of able to be able to do it in the wintertime? So I really would like you guys to seriously look at that proposal, I think they did a wonderful job. I think the other proposals are wonderful too. I think there's enough money out there to incorporate that we go big or we go home. Thank you.
Terry McIntosh from the High Desert Trail Riders Club. And all of these projects have been brought forward so far, they sound pretty exciting. And all three of these parks, there's access to public lands through trails, OHB trails. And the OHB or off-road industry is about a $760 billion industry, which is 2.2%, I think it is, of the national GDP. They employ 5.5, 6 million dollars. And I think we ought to look at bringing some of that into EVI also. And our club would very much like to be involved in anything we can do to help put this together. There's money available through the state for trail markers, maps, publications, pamphlets, et cetera. And anything that we can do to get involved with helping these projects out, we'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Terry.
We've heard from all of them in every single presentation, don't get me wrong, they're all warranted, they're all good and everybody did a really good job bringing their ideas to us. It's great. We we talked about, and we don't think we decided yet whether we want to prioritize. Normally they are graded one, two, and three in this one here. But what I'm gonna do now is go to each commissioner and ask for their their opinion on what what we've heard today. And after that's done with, we'll we'll put an item on there, a motion to select which one's number one, which one's number two, which one's number three. I think categorizing and putting in a priority carries a lot of weight because when Snipoma looks at it, or any other organization looks at what you're doing, they look at how the county feels about it, what does the county want to do with one, two, three? If the county throws them, like Bill said, if you just throw them all into one hat, they look at it and say, well, which one, they're all about the same amount of dollars, but which one do they do they prefer? So I think that when we get done with this little roundtable of us commissioners, we can make a, we can file a motion to select number one, and then motion to number two, and of course, number three will fall under number three. That being said, I'll go to Ian and you can, and I'll let him bring up his opinions.
So in any kind of hospitality or tourism or business situation, we all know that first impressions are are everything. I can have a really beautiful hotel with great rooms and all kinds of great things inside, beautiful pool, wonderful stuff, but if the outside of my hotel, if the entrance, the first thing everyone sees when they drive by is a dump, I'm not gonna be likely to have people wanna come. And so this, I hate to to prioritize because I think every one of these things needs to happen. My question, Elizabeth, how often do we go through this process, I'm kind of new to this thing?
As often as the federal government allows. It was supposed to be like an annual, yeah, it was supposed to be like an annual process, but it's kind of a political thing and so they postponed this yet again.
I see. Yeah, I really feel that the the park process needs to be priority one because we have so many great things already. There's more that can be done to take that up another notch, but we already have so much to offer. But I feel like our front door is not welcoming, I feel like our exterior, what people see, the first impression, as Mike said, you know, when you drive in, I mean, let's be honest, we're used to seeing it. But you go anywhere else where things are well taken care of, and forgive me because I've never been there, just haven't made it that way, but I hear a lot of my friends and people that go to St. George's are always commenting on how beautiful it is, how people, how well taken care of the parks are. But just any community, wherever they're doing that, it says this this community is alive, there's pride of ownership, there's pride of their of where they live. And so driving into a place that's just less than undeveloped doesn't communicate well, I don't think. So I would love to see that in priority, that we get our our best foot forward. And then, man, I would have to just flip a coin on the other two because they're both really, really good things and and really help us, so that's where I'm at.
You don't want to do the number two?
Uh, well, it's, man, I'm on the fence.
I mean, if you don't want it, I took it.
Yeah, I'm on the fence, I would say, see, the railroad, I don't think, even those of us that are fans of the railroad, I still don't think we've totally wrapped our mind around what a great job Mark is doing out there and what what an asset it is to our community in terms of tourism. I really, you know, just kudos to you guys, Mark, you're doing an amazing job out there. And so my instinct is to go, it's already doing so well, this other stuff would be even better, but it's doing well. I'd like to maybe see us support the fairgrounds a little bit and get that ramped up to, again, just people seeing it, I'd love to put our best foot forward over there, so. Man, I love them both. I guess I would say the fairgrounds would be a second thing. I'd I'd like to see us go a little further in getting estimates right. And talk, just a quick question, in terms of that facility, the the event center, how many square feet are we talking about?
90,000 square feet.
Perfect, and you're gonna make sure that there's proper sound system, proper acoustic treatment?
Yeah, that that's all part of it, yeah.
Because that's that's the other problem, we've got some decent facilities here to do that, but no decent sound equipment, no decent lighting or visual, and certainly no one knows how to run it. And so it'd be nice to have those things.
Yeah, that's all part of it, as well as, you know, heating and air conditioning, so it can be used your your.
Good, good. So I would say number two for me then would be the fairgrounds and the railroad.
Thank you. Travis?
Yeah, to Ian's point, these are all all good, equal projects. I think where my number one priority is, is kind of more splitting the phases out, is I think we should take care of our fairgrounds first, it's already existing. So like Phase One, the grandstands upgrade, the concessions remodel, that needs to be done one way or the other. Rather, you know, so I I think I think that's a small, small number, but I think if there's a way we can maybe prioritize a phase within these, that's definitely a big thing that needs to be done.
Maybe we could bundle that in with the with the county park project?
Yeah, if there was a, I mean, I look at this, the parks, I mean, ideally, the parks and fairgrounds, me, hold the two spots because they're they're a funnel. And we just, and I think we could only, you know, probably only have to hire one more person to do this. And I think the economic benefits these two things would do, you know, would more would, you know, warrant that. So I mean, I don't, I mean, what if we just hit them with a 30 million dollar number? Is that crazy or, I mean, they've brought hundreds of millions from us, the federal government, but having our lands locked out for 95% of the county forever?
We could certainly do that as an ask, but I I can't answer whether or not they would provide that larger of a project all at once. And the projects, yeah, I'll have to check on that, I think the projects need to be connected. So by providing the corridor between Broadbent and the the county park, you connected those projects into one. I I but I'll check on that for you, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so so my recommendation was we upgrade the facilities, the fairgrounds that are already there, the grandstand, the concession, the overplacement of the overnight barns, these different things that kind of sprinkled throughout this. And I think have that, and then the parks, and then the the arena, and then the railroad would be, how I see this as being the most bang for our buck.
Thank you.
I don't want to make a decision on two or three because I am, I'm torn.
Do you have?
Number one would be parks for me. We've gotten a lot of publicity. And Mark has been really rising to the the new level that we have attained in notoriety, safari is our night skies and I roll. But the fairgrounds really need help too. I I find it very difficult to really make a decision. At first I had the railroad second, and then the fairgrounds third.
Me too.
But I I'm, yeah, I'm torn, I I truly am. So with that said, I'll probably go with the with the majority is so far as the the board on that. Because I can't, I I'm. I would I would almost have to, I mean, the fairgrounds really needs help and they've done a good job, an excellent job of what they've done. At one time I sat, I was the liaison to the the board, the accurate team slash fairgrounds. And I've seen what they've done, I know what it was when we even had UNOB students come in and put together, you know, a landscape of what would be so far as their their rendering and drawings. Because back then money was really tight and and they've done well, so. I would be happy with either one.
That's real good.
I know, I'm not, I normally I'm very opinionated.
I think you're you're priority one, but I mean, if that's the way you feel, that's the way you feel. I mean, we've got five of us that have to make this decision. So if that's what you want, are you good with that, Lori, then just go with.
Yeah, parks is number one, yeah, because I I really, I mean, I'd have to do a little bit more deliberation
and weigh pros and cons and write it out to where I would see where.
Looks like you might have time. Okay, Shane?
Well, first of all, I'd like to compliment everybody that presented today because you made our our decision just terrifying. My number one, I'm going, downtown revitalization has been a desperate situation for as long as I've been involved. That's always been identified as as what we needed to do to kickstart our community and and really come up with a change and I really firmly believe this program does it. It gives us that plaza we're talking about, it ties it in, it it covers our two major entrances into, two of our three major entrances into town are are covered in this and really just splash and and give us what we need to to make that presentable. And and really, that kind of a facility downtown is just gonna jumpstart so much development in that area. I I just, I really like that. So that that's my number one. Two and three are tough. I lean a little bit to the railroad for one reason. That's a business that's open to draw people in 365 days a year. We're running trains year-round, we're running, they said that those museums are open and and they are a wonderful draw. And and so the the fact that that is not so much weekend events and and whatnot, it's actually an open draw year-round, that 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 kind of tips me to that one just a little bit more. But I'm comfortable with either project in either position, I really am. It's, but when it comes down to voting, that that is my one consideration with the railroad is that it draws when nothing else does.
Yeah, and that's that's pretty much why I went ahead and had rated the railroad as two, so.
I appreciate each one of you, very tough decision. My turn. I've I've been on the downtown thing, I've been, I voted against it every time, except for last year when we made our priority one for Snipoma, I voted two, do the downtown project. My opinion about that downtown project and all of downtown is, when the owners of the buildings put money up, then I'm good with it. But to ask us or any government agency to put the money up for that and then rely on those guys later on down the road to fix it, we've got one block, a couple blocks, but one in particular from the hotel up to the garnet, those buildings have been there since.